Yes. Romeo, you good to go?
Yeah, we're good.
Are you streaming?
Yes.
I'm recording.
Yes, we're streaming now.
Thank you.
Ready?
Yes.
All right. This is the Guam EPA Board of Directors' regular meeting. Today's date is Thursday, December nineteenth. Time is four o'clock PM. This meeting is being recorded. We'll go around like we used to. Carbalida.
Steven Carrera.
Steve Hollis.
Here we have a quorum, the publication went out, and we're streaming. We're going to get this meeting started. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Or any more questions?
Second. Second, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes. All right. November twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four, meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Um, on page five, we're gonna start talking about the lithium batteries. I mean, I know I was on Zoom. I don't have it.
Uh, yes. Yeah, yeah. No, because it told me that.
Sorry, sorry. Got you, did got you. Oh, that's right.
It told me that provided.
I do have it on my phone. Um.
Sure.
Um, I was on remote, but I came away from that part of the discussion with that, on Guam, we really don't do anything with lithium batteries, but that's not what I got from meetings. So I don't know, um, how we can, uh, how to change that, but.
You want a sentence revised or added?
I want, I want it that where it says, we go down one, two, three, four, the big paragraph. Where do the smaller batteries go? Rented by the individuals get referred to recycling facilities, um, who are able to take them. And then, uh, GSWA has some information that gets posted. And I don't know, I just think this, this sounds like we're doing something about it, but we're not. Cause that's, I came away that on Guam, we, we just basically are throwing them in the, in the, in the trash. And it ends up in the land.
This is correct. Okay, but we're talking about the minutes. So you want a sentence revised or?
Yes, I want to just add that really we're not doing, you know.
Maybe as in the agency?
Yes. Oh, well, uh, as the island, uh, Guam.
How about instead of, on the third line down, how about, uh, instead of just but not EV or solar or wave batteries? So right here it says Glen SN China stating that lithium ion battery is our being recycled, but not EV or solar or wave batteries. Then that's, does that make it?
No, because we're not doing the smaller lithium batteries either.
I thought we are doing smaller lithium batteries.
That's, see, that's, we came, that's what this is saying, but we don't.
You have to record him, so.
That's how they said.
Okay.
Okay, maybe if we could revisit this next time?
Okay, you want to table three minutes?
No, I, I would like to add looking at the lithium batteries.
To be gendered.
That's in the further next segment.
Oh, okay.
Cause there's still questions here.
But how about the minutes?
Um, Glenn stated there are some companies that take back program that, um, that was me and that's Home Depot. Home Depot just, um, gives them, hands them over to Unitec. So, um, and that was the only company that wasn't identified as taking any batteries back, as I remember.
So how about you like to amend that?
So I'd like just to say, um, just, uh, it, it was stated that Home Depot does take back smaller lithium batteries. And I think that's where we end, cause we didn't know what happened to them after that. Well, I, I would just like this to be published for another, another, the next, next week.
He wants to add it on to the agenda for the next meeting, but for this, this minute, he wants me to amend it to include his statement that he just said. So you can still make the motion to include the, the changes or the addition that he said.
No, I get it, but what? You said the reporting is exactly what it was.
Mm-hmm.
No, I know, I know I said Home Depot, so I'm, I'm.
I can, I can.
It's, it's pretty near. No, if you wanted adoption, maybe. Yeah, but sorry, we're, I mean, there's two options we could do. One is we can beef up this paragraph to be longer to include more dialogue as to what happened last minute. That's amazing.
I'll just change that one sentence.
Okay, that's fine.
So how does it read now?
We're gonna add.
Um, Home Depot does take back the smaller lithium ion batteries. If you mind to add, right?
Correct. Cause we didn't know what they did. We didn't know what we.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of November twenty-one. Um, with the addition, I mean, of the second, as we passed it by Director Hollister, that Home Depot takes back small lithium batteries. We put it on paper.
Do, so second, second? Any other discussion? There are none, all in favor?
Okay.
All right. So, I mean, when you amend it, you're gonna amend it in the November minutes. So send us your decision back. Okay, separate. Thank you. Um, next item, let's jump down to item six. Consideration, adoption, modification of a document to alter action levels. So, welcome Kristen back. Thank you, with, uh, me of you last time. But I spoke with Kristen, um, since our last meeting. And one of the big things that we can, um, get into is, uh, prior to us discussing and voting last time, um, we were informed that we could either vote up or down that proposed IAAS agreement. Um, but apparently that's not the first story. So we could also amend the rules and that would be implemented if, uh, voted on and approved. Um, just trying to question if I have it wrong. But, um, so because we did our vote based off of incomplete information, either it's moot or we could rescind it or it's non-binding or something like that.
So, so, uh, if I could, I guess, chime in on a couple of points on both the questions that you have raised. So, so first, my, my understanding is that, that you guys did already vote to approve the action. Um, you can revisit that, that, um, decision that you made as long, I mean, you know, if it's properly noticed and, and all that. And if you, and, and you know, if nothing has happened and relying on, on that decision that you made. Um, and, um, and if you have support for, you, you know, why you're making a new decision. If you can't just go, um, today we said this and, you know, then tomorrow you're gonna now say something else. Anything that you guys do, it has to be supported in your, in your record. And so that's kind of, um, the same answer as to, you know, can you, um, make changes to the rules that the agency, um, proposed? And yes, you can, but it has to be supported in the record. And you, you know, the, the, the record that you have of, you, you know, how these rules were developed. You, you know, you have your subject matter experts that have, um, come up with whatever it was that they, that, that they, um, had determined was gonna be the, 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 um, most effective rule. Um, you had your public comments, um, and, um, you had your responses to the public comments. And all of that is part of the record. So if you're gonna do something different from all of that that was compiled there, you need to make sure that that's based on something. On something substantive that's going to be also part of your record. So I just wanna caution you about, you know, just saying, well, let's just change this or let's just change that. I mean, you have to make sure that that's based on, on something, um, something substantive. Um, if that.
Other than good intentions.
Well, I mean, you, you know, it, it, you're gonna, I think, presume that everything is done with good intentions, but you have to have your record that supports the thing that you did. And so when, when, you know, when, when you had your whole packet of how these action levels were developed, you, you know, it, it included a, a, a number of things that, you, you know, what, like what it's based on and, and again, the, the, the public hearing. And, and this is, this is regardless, I know it came, it came up before about the, um, you, you know, can you change it after the public comment period or do you need a new public comment period? Um, you typically wouldn't need to have a new forty-five day comment period unless your rules, like, really change significantly. You could have another one if you wanted to. There's something that would prevent you, but you wouldn't have. Um, but I just, again, would caution you about making changes that would be arbitrary.
And, and have, you have to have some sort of supporting documentation for, from somewhere. From maybe another state or maybe, uh, uh, national.
Yes, like what, what are, what are you basing these things on?
Okay, all right. Yeah, we were, we were not sure what, what we could do.
Happened once we only got everything, like the materials, like minutes before the meeting started. And we, um, well, the, the public comments were before us, but then I had asked a question whether these responses have gone out. And the, what I was told was that, no, we don't send these responses out. Um, but then I heard later that GWA wanted to testify at, um, the last meeting. Um, and I just felt like they didn't have an opportunity.
And you, and you can certainly give them that opportunity to, you know, you can listen to, to what they have to say and they base on that. You think you need to go back and make revisions, that can happen. But you, you know, you, you guys are not stuck with, you know, no, we're voting people down. You, you know, you could, you, you could have, you, you could continue to consider them for your ready to, to adopt them.
Yeah, and that's the big change.
Right.
Cause that's before last meeting, you were told up or down, and that's it.
And. But then also, once you adopt them though, if you're gonna go change them later, you, you're gonna have to start the whole process over again. And so you are gonna need a new comment period and you are gonna need, you, you know, you're gonna need a basis. You can't, once you adopt your, your, your rule, you can't just then just.
Okay, so you do need to.
Follow the same process to amend it that month that you did to get them.
Just to clarify. So if we had decided, for example, to move the thirty day to fifteen or ten or five or twenty-four hours, but because that was our, as we were feeling the public needed to have that notice earlier. Arbitrary or?
Well, yeah, you, you want it to be based on, on something. Something. Like why, why are you, why? Why are you further explained? You couldn't understand why this is, how did, we need more, we, we need more, um, documentation of this, um, this choice.
Yeah, well, I think lesson learned, and I think for, certainly for me, it was like one meeting, this is for your information, I dress. Then the next one is action, right? And, you know, and I think last meeting, I felt compelled like, well, we better pass something or we don't have anything. And so that's kind of where we, where we are now. But, but thank you.
And, and, and then if, if I could just, is it would be okay for me to, um, just respond about the, um, public comments? Typically what happens is public comments are made and the agency reviews them. The agency is required to review them. So they'll review them and, and comment on those comments as part of their record. But they don't typically go back to every person or, um.
That was something that came up last week because the agency had responded to a comment that was made, but it was unclear whether or not that response was, uh, provided to the comment board.
And that's not typical. That would, that, that, you, usually those comments are just all part of that record. And they're, they're not, I mean, cause you, you could imagine, I mean, you, you know, if you only have one that can comment, it's not a good deal. But if you have a lot, the, the burden on the agency to go back and respond to every comment, when that's not really the purpose. It's not like, it's not opening a dialogue, it's saying, here, we, we did all this research, here's our, here's our rules. What is everybody thinking? You get that input and you have to, you have to have your response there in the record. You have to consider those comments, but you don't have to go back to, to each person who commented and respond to them.
So just for recording?
It's not just for the record. I mean, it's, it's the, it's, they have to be considered. So you know that they're considered because they're commented on, um, in that record of the, of the whole.
The agency considered, but they didn't have to open a dialogue with the commenting board.
Correct. So I, I hope that clarifies that. But if there was no, if there was no response to any of the comments, then you could, you know, you, you guys would be like, hey, agency, all these comments were made, what, you, you know, where, where's our, where's our response?
I think some of the responses were just made that day, so that kind of complicated it a little bit in terms of, oh, all right, we'll just respond to that. I think at the end of the day, we all went through it and we were satisfied that the levels needed to be implemented and we were okay with that. I don't know if anybody else feels the need to revisit, um, the prior approvals. I don't. Director Hollister is looking at it. Whatever he brings, he's looking at. I mean, if anybody feels that way, we should have that discussion.
Yeah. What's, what's that?
It's a part of the environment.
Um, we got some folks in the room, uh, talk, and design. Yeah.
Thank you. I'm, uh, I'm Vanjean, I'm a senior regulatory analyst for GWA. And thank you, and I'm with me is Jennifer Cruz. She's our utility administrator for our laboratory. And, um, in August, GWA provided the comments to the, this proposed rule. And, uh, thank you so much for having this discussion at least we are here. And I know it's, the burden is on ourselves to make sure we check the agenda. We knew that this was coming up and it had been months from the time we didn't know. So it was an oversight on our part of thank you for, uh, considering reconsidering it and especially this very, very present. And I understand that we don't necessarily need to provide responses to our comments, but I mean, one, I'm just asking, wondering, are the comments, the responses published anywhere? Or is it only through the meeting? And we, how, how do we do that? How do we see what the responses are?
Can I respond to it? It's, it would be part of the public record.
Is, is that posted on your website?
Um, that part I, I don't know.
Is it? I believe we discussed it with Nick, so I'm not sure if he's already posted the comments on the website.
So, but in the meantime, just for your reconsideration, um, we're not, uh, although we have some issues about how the, uh, uh, interim action level was done, we do have other issues related more to the implementation of the rule. Specifically, um, because we had, GWA had been, had provided this data, our DLG data regularly for several years. How many of the last ten years, right? That you had that data to be reviewed. But the way that, even with the way that it was documented in the proposed rule and in your advertisement, and what I understand from Julie and our conversation is that we would, because we have the information, we would do, the only public water system that would have to start, uh, following the regular, after the monitoring has adopted, we would then have to be providing notification to our water providers, I mean, our customers as to the levels of the DLG, you know, it is present in the water source. And one of our biggest comments, because we do have like several pages of comments on this, is that we would like to be treated reasonably, the same way other public water systems are treated. And why are we separated from them? Because we were doing something that, we were reporting data that is one unregulated. It wasn't really a requirement, but we just did it because we had the data available and we provided it to, um, G, G, Guam EPA. So that's one thing that we would like to reconsider is that the rule is applied equally across the board to all public water systems. That's the first one.
Um, have, have you already, um, been briefed on the responses to the comments?
No.
Okay, do you wanna respond?
Sure. Okay, so we responded to that, that, you know, in the proposal to an action rule, um, uh, for the LTR, there is an accountability. They require all systems, current Guam public water systems that have data, that those systems, the data, or the, the data that, that are moving towards not if the, the international control is just passing through. Those days will be used towards monitoring and compliance. And therefore, since, since GWA has those data, as you can, we're saying we're gonna use those data and, and, uh, for monitoring and to find the system that, um, the remaining system, um, that does not have data will start immediately, uh, on the quarterly. And once we get those data, um, we will calculate the, the running annual average. That's what we will do with GWA. So whatever data that you have, uh, let's say we have it for the past four quarters, we're gonna take those, take that data, calculate the running annual average. And if any of those, um, wells that exceeds our proposed action level, then therefore we will require to conduct a tier one, tier two. The rest of all of the public water systems will be on the same monitoring and they will conduct this proposed international rule. They're requiring, they're, they must do the, the DLG.
So if I can be correct, it's, it sounds like if GWA, because they have previous data, if they have wells that are in compliance, then they'll move immediately to annual reporting or annual testing.
Yeah, so we would, we would, um, we have to review their data, right? Because they have how many wells, hundred and three wells, everything, twelve, everything twelve wells. We're gonna look at all that data and we're gonna, we're gonna have to calculate the running annual average for four quarters. So if they have those data, we, we immediately, we're gonna cycle the calculation and determine which well, based on the international level, uh, will be put on the, um, on, um, on the clients. I mean, for those wells that does not exceed the international rule, we'll then, uh, we'll make a determination how to put them on reduced monitoring.
So it's a benefit GWA because they have that data already.
Correct. Yeah, we're gonna, we're going to evaluate all of their, uh, data, which we have on record for, um, in the obligations. And then all of the systems, um, that have not collected, uh, samples for DLG will be put on quarterly. Once we get those four quarters, we'll make a determination, do the calculation, uh, the running, calculate the running annual average and make a determination they exceeded the international level.
I think for us, what it is, is why aren't we all starting with the same standard? Just because, you know, like why aren't we all, us, Anderson, the Navy, everybody who are, the, ours, whoever, whoever's silent, whoever is a waters, a water provider, a public water system? Why aren't we all starting at the, uh, date that is being approved going forward? And that, that is our, our biggest issue is that why are, why are we being, because we did something that was not regulated, it's not required, but we, we provided it to you. But now I think because we feel that, um, that the mediation or the, what our, our action is gonna have to be after this, because you have the data, we have to start doing it sooner than other water providers after you know why. I just feel it's about fairness and being equal to all water providers and not separating us.
You feel like you're being punished for doing the right thing.
Yeah. But, but, but it's more, it's more about being consistent. It's about consistency across, because we also receive water from the Navy, but they're not being asked to do this at the same time we are, right? And so, you know, that's, and so that's, that, that, for that particular issue, I, I understand.
And because, and, 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 you know, the, the DLG, again, it's unregulated. Other systems, all of the public water system is now, you know, we're not required to, to transfer if it's unregulated. But part of, you know, again, whatever the conflict between you and your friends, whatever, you know, on that method or, you know, for pesticides, right? DLG is part of that, that group method. And it's, 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 you don't pay digital, it's just part of that method. But that what had, the ten years, over ten years of data that was received, we, um, very, you know, NEIC when they came out, EPA, NEC came out, we used the record and we showed that there is an old pile of DLG in GWA's water system past ten years, ten years that they were here, eleven years ago, showed that DLG was, was, was detected. And you're saying showing there was a spike in the DLG, which prompted NEIC to report this and, and, and make this known to us that they, you know, there's issues with DLG in your waters, this is something that we need to get past, like we really need to start, um, flipping things to the. So that's what had haunted because of USC, USC, KRC and headquarters, you know, this coming from ECA that we need to do something about and take a closer look at this DLG and look at the trend, which we do have data and it showed this high. And so based on that, right, on, on, on that data, that's what prompted us to do additional research, get our pathologists on board on this and do that research for almost a year. It's not, we're not trying to single out anybody because we have that data. If we didn't have that data, we wouldn't have known. What we have, there is, there is an issue with DLG in our drinking water. And we need to fix that. We really need to correct, uh, and, and try and lower the level for DLG in our drinking water. If we didn't have that data, we wouldn't, we wouldn't know.
I guess, like, the question you're asking is, why isn't everyone else tested? And because it's unregulated, because it's unregulated, it can't be.
And it just so happens that it was because of the way that, the method that we are using. Is that the water includes and that we just, because certainly we could have gotten and blacked out all the stuff that are not, um,
Regulated.
Regulated. I mean, we, we could, and perhaps that's what we need to do in the future, I'm not quite sure. But it was more of a, um, oh, we're providing the data as it is and we're not, we're not making changes.
Can I, can I ask a question? Can I, um, uh?
It's, I mean.
So here, here's, here's my question. Are, are you, um, objecting to having to, um, potentially issue a tier one or tier two notice, um, upon, um, these rules being implemented, only because there's data that, that some of the wells might, um?
I don't, I think it's about fairness to what, to read people on that and then.
But, but, but that's what, that's what I'm, that's what I'm wondering.
On the issue, issue later to change.
Can you respond to that?
Here.
Wait, can I, if I work with this topic?
Wait, can I, can I work with this topic? Can I just, let me just review the regulations that are allowing us to utilize previous data.
I, we understand, yeah.
And we, in the comments, so we didn't see the comments, so in the comments that on the board, you guys all have. We cited the regulations that state that we can use data, any monitoring data collected after January first nineteen eighty eight.
Yes.
Under that section, so of course, yes, we did, you know, do have some samples for uh the pesticide that included D L G N. Of course, I wouldn't say it's unfair, but it is there and so we are.
We have to get it.
Correct. And I guess.
It's like being transparent, you know?
Yes.
That's what, that's what U S E P A, very fair.
Force our hand to create this international.
Correct.
Because.
Uh, I, we understand that. I'm just making a point that e- even in the documentation that you sent out, you utilize, you use GWA as a sample of what you did. And I'm not like, I mean, I'm just saying that, that uh we're um, um, we will apply by the regulation and the rule that you're setting, but these are just some of our concerns. That we are being, because we have the data, we are being required to do the work of the public water systems, our requirement. That's really a big concern for me. And then, so the other issue that we have is that we would like to understand um in the other, uh like uh with the inspection sampling, we sample at the first customer, within, within the distribution system and um instead of at the well. And so most of, especially in the areas that are of consideration, whether the D L G N has shown increases, that all those wells are actually, water out of those wells before the distribution system is all mixed. So that just, the well might have some um, um D L G N in it. It does not necessarily mean that that's the wa- water that is being uh received by the first customer. And so even with our, our deperfection samples, we don't take, get out of wells like take it out of within the distribution system. And so that's our other concern is that, can you reconsider the location of the sample taken? Is that an option that we can discuss about where the sample is taken to truly determine if that's really why the public is considering?
So, so the, the D L G N, the proposed international, all of the S S C I C, U S C are required, except for letting factor, this is fact, this effect by product, by product and all of them are allowed connected in the distribution. Everything else has to be an entry point to the distribution. No other location of that true point.
Okay, so if these wells are, are combined into a reservoir, so the reservoir will give it entry point. We actually will have to sample there and see the level.
Correct. So what will give that, just as long as it's after the, so the well after treatment and then um you have to identify what is the entry point of the distribution values where with, wh- what, where you guys are collecting all of your I G N, I G Ns, U S C's and S S C's. It'll be the same sampling location, which is the entry point of the distribution.
Which one have to activate it?
Yes.
But we not they.
Yeah, so they can give it a free five one if you.
So we have to.
The entry point, yes.
And that's good. Some of these wells are actually into the reservoir, so let's just say the D. The D, the D wells, we stop it to you and you could have a point five level, but actually mixed into a into a, a reservoir and that's where actually the actual entry point, but because we haven't updated our entry points. That's why you're, you're considering the wells instead of the actual entry point.
So how does this work if now the data that you're making this decision and requirements to do is not actually the most recent data related to what we're really trying to monitor and education and for monitoring?
Well, the entry point. Whatever that was submitted to us, we have to base it off on that, that data, because we didn't, we don't.
Right, so how, so I, so.
Maybe, maybe we need to request to update our entry points and then from there, we're going to.
Start the data, start the, including of the data.
We can do the same.
I'm sorry. In, in, you know, the false international level, you look at the, the applicability um section there under the proposed international level, like we all just have a, a capability, like the data that we have will use towards compliance and nature. So whatever data we have, we're gonna, that's probably the reason for.
But even though it's not the actual entry point, but that's what.
We would, we would, we would. And then, for next day, but for the next day in the future.
Well, we're like, what you're saying is a different purpose.
No, but you have, but you have to, like, you do have to, like, in the other, but, but you also.
No, but that was for, but it was for a different purpose, something that they are using a different, for a completely different thing. It's not, the data is more sampling and there for this, for these, right?
Yeah, the scenario is basically a pump water from the ground. And then enters into the reservoir, but it blended, it's diluted. So the concentration of D L G N periodically will go down as long as the other wells have less D L G N than the well that's where it's.
Oh, that's actually.
So that would give a sample location and then that would trigger tier one or tier two.
Right.
But is it the distribution from that reservoir? Is that what goes up?
Yes, correct, yeah.
And that's where you touched it.
And so that, that's where that data is.
Actually, from the well, from the well, not from the reservoir, not.
Or the entry point, yeah. Not in the distribution system.
No, it's not at the distribution, it's at the well.
When you say the well is after treatment, yeah.
Yeah, they have to after treatment.
After treatment, yeah. So it's not actually going straight into, it's an actual entry point, the entry point to the distribution actually from.
But, but that was determined which ones, right? So whatever data you have, because your, your lab results shows that the D N one well, we will, we will calculate with a specific well, whatever data that we're gonna, uh, 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 review it and do the calculation.
But it's not at the distribution system, it's not at the first customer yet.
I get, I get.
Can you?
It's not, the, the first customer is not entry point with the, entry point is before the first customer.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we're gonna make that point, entry point is not after the first customer.
It's after though, but it's.
It's after the treatment.
It's after treatment and.
Just as long as we have that, because you're, the response is, let's say, the, let's say, I think the thing, right? You guys are collecting samples from there, we're gonna calculate and, and, and determine the running annual average. If it exceeded the international level, then that's going to give a tier one, tier two, right? Meaning like.
But that's kind of inaccurate though, because you, this whole tier one, tier two is because we're concerned about what concentrations the customers are getting, but you're basing it on the concentration of one well, which essentially they really are not getting a concentration. Okay, so can we, can, can I, can, sorry, can I just, because it sounds like your issue is not with the, with the rule as it's written, your concern is about how you believe this goes to implement it?
Uh, that and where we're taking the sample.
Well, because I mean, I'm, when I'm looking at this document, it does say that are entry points. So, so I'm just, just wondering if maybe that's a conversation that you could have outside of the, the board.
Yes, so I'm not, I think it's moving forward, we're gonna, we're gonna do that.
Comment should be part of a public hearing. Yeah, I mean, and, and that's not where all these things can be aired.
Yes. I only have two more other comments that I'd like to leave. I'm sorry. And so the, and so other than the discussion about this, the entry level, we do have a, um, in our conversations with GWA. Uh, ha- ha- after we have to make the notification that to be aware that you're drinking in the water. One of the uh suggestions is that they, you tell our customers to go to a drinking water vendor. And you, in the um, public notice for the, the, the vending machines were um tested in two thousand and twenty twenty three. But they're not tested every year, having that, um, there's an assumption that the GAK systems are maintained. And we have many a GAK system that is very costly and we maintain them a lot. And I, I doubt, well, I don't know, what is the responsibility of GWA? Because right now the vending machines are under public help, to ensure that those systems have some, uh, that they're tomorrow, when, or now, if I go drink water from there, that does not have any contaminants in that. Because of the inconsistency of inspections, monitoring, but that is the, that is what is going to be the recommendation. And I'm not sure, is that better than, than us and then not doing it at all?
I know that there's been a discussion about, you know, when we started doing the um testing on those vending machines after Typhoon Mawar, whether or not it was more appropriate for all E P A to do the testing in addition to them being regulated by public health as a, you know, a food source, right? We would, uh, under their um eating and drinking uh rules and that. So we haven't decided whether or not that is something that we are gonna take on as an additional responsibility. Um, you know, and add more regulations to these public ones. Oh, that would require the regulations, you know, authority to be able to inspect it, you know, kind of overlapping jurisdiction with public health. Um, and we haven't, we haven't, it's a discussion that we haven't made a decision on it. But that would include an additional hundred and nineteen, other than nineteen individual vending machines um for us to test and regulate. Um, so that's, you know, something that we have to consider.
But, you know, um, just so, just, just for the record that, you know, we, we did, um, we did do training, we did train on some of the, or the inspectors in the public health how to um to do the inspection and to determine if their, if their treatment process is working. And so they can tell if their GAK system or if they're uh filtration or their um, uh, what is it, their U B's working. At the end product, if the water is being distributed, so they can really, they know that there's, if the treatment process is not working. But we're saying um that, that uh the water vending machine is the best alternative to uh get water, if the, if the water that they're receiving has exceeded the international.
And, and just, just as a, a cost factor analysis that we looked at was, you know, so these water vending machines rely on the water being at the inlet into these machines. So they rely on GWA's, you know, the super report to say the water is clean at the inlet, right? So if we subject these individual vending machines to the national drinking water standards, we subject them to the same test data that, that you do, which is like what? What's a pot trotting, running one of your thousands, thousands and quarterly? Right? So thousands of dollars on each individual, hundred and nineteen individual vending machines, you know? That us um analysis is gonna be exorbitant for these individual drinking water stations if we choose to take them off from under GWA's umbrella.
I think it's just the, um, you're making this recommendation, like you're, you're not, I mean, you're not responsible for the frequency that being inspected, monitored, tested, right? And so finally, the other thing that we have is just consistency with the other uh U S E P A regulations, like if two years before, you have to um
Implement.
Implement and we're wondering that while we, and I, your standard is you have the authority to choose whatever time period you want. Uh, but we're just, because we are trying to be or have it more clear as to why it's not consistent with all the other federal regulations which allow for two years. Having said that, I do wanna mention that GWA has, it has already moved forward with putting a GAK system for the wells that have a high uh D L G N possibilities. It is going to take us one year. And if you think a thousand dollars is a lot, but one little GAK system is a billion dollars. So, um.
For the three, for the three rods, right? I think, I think Miguel said two billion.
It's got one, 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 the other two are gonna be just six million dollars for that. We're putting on, for the three wells, it will be these two or small GAK systems and a large system for six million dollars. So I think we just need additional time, because in addition to this, then copper and P F O S and all the other. I think if all these were new contaminants, we were not held accountable over, over, that we, none of us knew about. Five years ago. But we are not in the process of mitigating that and ensuring that water quality is safe for people to drink. I think we just would like to be more, if we could work together so that the implementation, because once you start telling people that your water's not safe to drink, then it, it, other than it erodes the um integrity of GWA, it also makes the public less confident about um the other things that we have to do. And then of course, we're talking about personal. Don't forget, did you wanna answer?
Yes, I do. Um. Um. So about the communication, so this is also an organ. Um, um, but it requires, it's in federal standards where, you know, we're not required to be twenty four hours loaded, like a boil water.
So, and, and so, you know, I got a idea about that, that's because, you know, um, if we did the, we did the um um, you know, our basis for this international level. And, you know, based out of, you know, GWA's review, you know, um, the state of federal uh with, um, the guidelines, right? And so, um, there is a, uh, there is a, a national contingency plan and the U S E P A risk assessment guidance. So we looked at the, the, the risk and so for the, the zero point two, and you know, we're looking at one, uh, the one in ten thousand. So we look at that, those, those risk assessments. And then we feel that if they, the zero point two, um, at the, the tier two level, and we did the filter space and we are following the whole line. Because many, we, 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 as a international level. So we followed um what, like, what we felt that is um, that will work for, for the, for the. So the zero point two and zero two based out of the, the risk assessment contingency file that we, uh, under guidelines. Um, uh, so, so based off of that, you know, it's a tier two, we're gonna hit, you know, the thirty days. But however, there's this zero point five, you guys have to understand that the zero point five is the um short-term non-cancerous um levels that affects the liver and, what is it, the liver and the, and the nervous system. And these will affect children, you know, at that level is zero point five. And that, that we need to, you know, um, um, notify, we, we have to issue a public notification within forty four hours that they need to get their water, you know, from the, you know, from the watering machine or installed, you know, point of use uh in the water system. We, we need to, you know, we're gonna talk about, public health, that our goal is to protect. And that's what we have is two levels, um, you know, a tier one and zero point five, because of the short-term non-cancerous. It will affect children, you know, their nervous system and their, and their liver versus the zero point two is just going pain.
What is the status of all of the organic compound? They are active itself, even if you, you have one pit or an M C L of two point five. That's there, that's, that's really toxic, but then yet they keep, it, it, I mean, we only require zero two, so that's why it's kind of, you know. And, and it's not. It's not a regular compound, it's there because I have to.
But then, but then, but, you know, based out of our, you know, our sources, our experience, our, our, our research, we look at the four states. And this is where we feel that, you know, um, because it is a, you know, our, our regulation, it's not a head, a C L, it's not E P A. That's why they proposed the international level. And we look at the, the, the tier one of zero point five and zero point two, two, two. It's, it's sort of saying, okay, zero point two, you know, there, there, it's, something needs to get done. But it's not as bad as a zero point five or it's.
But even. Not a particular well, as we said, that is not what the consumer is ingesting or around, it's from the well. It's still, it is, um, yeah, in a mixed system and what we receive isn't that. But I, I accept that.
But, but what the data, what the data we collected, the midnight sample of what we did is, is showing, I mean.
Right, so the concentrations might be below, um, two percent.
And so, I would just like to say thank you for hearing our comments. Of course, G W A is going to comply with whatever this court has decided. And we just wanna make sure that our concerns, because it's not so, we don't. Our concerns are heard by the board and that there's a better understanding as to um. Player, some of these issues about the tier one and tier two, the point of entry, the data collected. But actually also consistency across all public water systems, that it's consistent and, um, certainly, um. Whenever the board decides you're, we are, you're the regulators and we're gonna be able, you'll have to comply, so. We're just asking for consideration of some of our issues. But thank you very much for the conversation.
Thank you. So my question is, what happens from last meeting? Cause we voted that it was based off of incorrect information that we couldn't do anything about the proposed I A L.
If I, if I could, I think that what it was with the voting to approve it or not approve it is if you didn't approve it, then it would restart our clock. Again, to, to do another action level that you had already disapproved it. So we would have to go through the whole process of reintroducing.
Well, the basis of the vote was that we do something quicker than they, they, but we're hearing. I think that some people may not have to implement it as quickly as we thought. And so is our vote from last time, like, like, is that, is that what's standing? Or do we have just questions who still revise it without all that?
Yeah, I mean, okay, let's just see, this is a test, you forgot it. Um, is that we voted, we have to restart the process to make.
But it's the idea that our vote was based on the component voted upward down. But it changes the vote, that information changes it.
Okay, now go to the attorney.
Well, it, I mean, if you thought you had some. A- a- again, you, you, you can have justification to revisit your, your vote. Um, and I, I will say again that if you're going to make changes. In this document, I would caution you, you can proceed very carefully. Because you wanna make sure that you have your justification and have to ask me what changes you're doing.
Right, so bringing it back to the original point, cause the vote was based off of uh certain information and that information has changed. So the rationale towards the vote is different. And my understanding of my conversation was that if you, if, 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 if a board acts on. On information that has changed, then they're not inclined to that vote.
If the board, if, if the board all votes to reconsider what you did last time. And that's what the board is doing, and if the board, you know, when you're reconsidering. Um, has different, you, you know, feels that they have different information. Um, then that's, you can, then you'll be able to, to do that. I mean, you, you, I, I'm just. I'm just wondering, cause I, I don't have, I don't know what was on the previous agenda. Um, but if you had the approval of the, the old inaction level in the previous agenda, because you did, you did vote on it. And in your agenda item, it doesn't say you're. Well, it doesn't say that you're reconsidering your previous action.
Okay, but in terms of the analysis though, is if the board has different information presented to it, statements with wrong, incorrect, misleading, whatever the term is. That the board.
You could reconsider it. If you, if you all agree.
We cannot.
You could reconsider it if you all agreed to do that.
So reconsider as a to rescind the approval from last meeting.
And so then there's nothing.
That would be, would be, that would be the right.
But would that start the whole process again in terms of implementing the regulations?
No, because then we're, we, then we're at where we are at.
If you did not approve it. Yeah, if you voted to reject this, that takes it back to, to be those.
No, but we're not voting to, we wouldn't be going to reject it, we'd be continuing the discussion as opposed to doing final asking.
So maybe the approval from last meeting doesn't stand, will we take an action?
Well, it's, you haven't done anything right now, that's your action, you have, you voted to approve it and that's where it can stand. So if you're going to undo that, then that's what the board would be doing.
But you're saying that we can't do that.
You can, you can, you know, um.
Because the information was not complete last.
But they're asking, they can, but do they have to start the forty five day period?
No, because it's as if we were just reviewing.
What forty five day period is meaning the public comment?
Yeah, 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 like.
That's, that, that's kind of different from what the board is doing. That's, that, that's all the stuff that happened.
Yeah, because basically what we're saying is, once the board votes on the I A L, then it's final, right? So.
And the board has voted on it.
I know, but, but on our discussion, it was, the board voted on not complete or misleading or not correct information. So that vote could be not passed.
But it just, but nothing is too, you know, the, 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 um, I, I A L that was presented to the board several times has not changed.
But the information that we can only vote it upward down, and then that vote is final, implemented immediately has changed. Because if we knew that we could revise it and then that's what gets implemented immediately, then that's one route. But if you can only vote it up, then these other providers who, when is their implementation, they, that's completely new information.
But it's not a regulated contaminant, so we can't force, we can't mandate, you know, we, there's no authority for us to mandate, you know, other. Uh, water systems to test because it's not a reg, you know, it's not a regulated contaminant. The information that was taken by. By the data that was collected or, you know, by their monitoring, our regulation says, okay, you monitored for it, you didn't have to, but you did. It shows a, you know, um, uh, uh, a detection of a, of a contaminant, then we have to add on it because of it.
Right, and why?
No, just for them.
I thought you said that everyone will eventually come on, so how's that different from?
There's, there's no difference because the, those systems that, that did not collect samples, there's a longer time to. We're gonna pick, but once it, the, once it's a, a, an international requirement is the rule. Then we will put them accordingly, upon monitoring.
And when do they have to comply with tier one and two?
When they, if they see the, if they've seen it.
On their first round of testing.
With no, we, we will collect the.
For a year?
For one year.
Right, so why not the first round?
Because that's what we, uh, the blending hour average is based on, yeah, it's based on collecting, um, the forward orders. We got, uh, uh, we'll be doing initiation and then that will determine the, the, the internal action.
That's all I'm talking about, is this situation has changed.
Yeah.
No, but from last meeting, where you, you voted up or down.
But the reg, but the, because the conditions of, you know, including everyone else hasn't changed, it's still in the action level.
We read, we read the public comments, we read the agency's responses and that's where we're at, so. The idea that you can only vote it up or down has changed.
But that was what was motion at the meeting.
But that's because of the information that the board received.
Because that was the motion that was made. I mean, you could have, remember there was a, a question, whether or not. We were rescinding, if, if, you know, uh, if, uh, Director Castro's motion to vote on it is being rescinded. She could have taken it back or could have not voted.
But it still was voted up or down.
Well, okay, what is, what do, what do we wanna do moving forward? All right, do we want, I mean, cause I see a couple of sources of action. We can have a motion to, uh, ignore a vote or rescind from the last meeting on this order, that's one thing. Then you'd have to have another motion, what do you wanna do? Do you wanna kick it back to the committee? Kick it back, bring us more information, bring us updated, updated information by the February meeting? Mark, I mean, you know, what is, what is reasonable, so.
And what is it to, to add additional revisions? To reduce, I mean, to alter the tier one or tier two, um, requirements, the notification? I mean, cause what was, what's in here is.
Well, I'm just wondering is, if we leave this meeting right now, I, is what we did last night implemented? Or do we, or can we still get answers to our question regarding how other providers are. Going to be, uh, treated and also like all sorts of comments last time, but uh, it's your two notification requirements. So those are things that are still being discussed, but I'm just wondering if we leave here. Are, are we at that final stage where you have to restart whole process again if you are to incorporate or amend certain, certain of the I A L?
Well, if you resc, I, I think, I mean, I think, I don't know, if you rescind your approval, then it's like, it's still kind of in limbo, right?
Right.
And then if you add, um, revisions to the I A L, then we would have to start.
No, we don't have to.
It's a change to, it's a change to what the public, uh, hearing was based on, was the.
But.
But we can make, but we can make.
You know, we don't have to revisions, right?
Yeah, you can make revisions without going back to the forty five day.
A point of clarification last time is that we as the board are able to. But it is, what do we want the staff to do? Communicate with G W A and come up with, uh, you know, the answers to these things?
I know, but just, I just, what you're saying is. You don't have to go back to the forty five day and this is a quicker doubt, but.
If, if I, if, 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 if I could, um, the, the point of the public comment is to consider them and revise the. Revise these if, if it's warranted by the, by that input. So, so, so no, you, 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 you know, to, to say, oh, we can't change it. You can, you can change it based on the input, that's the point of getting the input. Is to consider if you want to make changes to this document. The agency considered all of the public comments. Determined not to make changes to this document and to present it to the board without further revisions. And, and then, and then the board voted on it based on, uh, you know, all, all of, all, all of those things. And you're saying now, well, now we want to change it. You, you could, you could vote as a board to say, let's reconsider what we did last month and let's undo that. And, um, and then let's make changes to it. But again, those changes would have to be based on something. Um, and then you could, you, you know, then you could take a new, a, a new vote. Or you could.
Without a, without a, I mean, if there's.
You, you wouldn't, if, if, if it wasn't significantly changed, you wouldn't need to put it back out for another forty five days.
A part of this, if we can change. Would be to go from a twenty nine day notification to, how, I mean, what would you wanna reduce it to? Ten days, five days, that's a significant notification revision to a tier one or two.
It could, it could be, depending on, a- again, depending on what kind of changes you were considering.
I mean, if it's changing the word but to then, or, you know, whatever, like minor type of, but.
But, but what I'm, what I'm wondering is, is, you, you know, I mean, the, the board, if, if the board isn't going to actually make changes to this document. Then, you know, it, it already, you, you did already vote on it. Um, so, you know, could you undo it?
It, it, you know, but. We could, but, but then moving forward, what are those like three, four, five points of clarification that the board wants to be brought? Before it again to consider, you know, whether or not to. And right now, we gotta have a, a, a bunch as, as this conversation has unfolded. Um, you know, G W A and E P A are not quite aligned on a number of subjects, so, um.
And it's, it, it, it's, it's.
And I don't think it ever will be.
Well, and it's possible that maybe there just needs to be further discussion, um, about the, uh, not necessarily a board discussion. But further agency discussion about what that implementation is gonna look like. And I know that, um, what I, I heard G W A say, you know, they might make some requests or what, whatever, based on, on this. That, that, um, the agency might consider in figuring out how to actually implement this. But it wouldn't affect adopting this or not adopting it or, you know, changing it, um, you, you know. And, and, and then a- a- again, if you guys wanted to, to, um, amend this to say, okay, we'll take this now. And agency, you go back and look at making changes. They could, they could go back and recommend to the board, yeah, you know what, we need to make these changes. Or no, this is, this is, um, um, why we, you, you know, they could justify to the board.
That makes more sense.
Why they, why they did this. And then if they needed to make those changes, then yes, it would start that whole process.
So we can rescind, task the agency to go get more information.
I, I don't think we need to rescind, right?
We're going to amend just in that.
Well, you, you.
I think we're just willing to reconsider requests of G, G W A at a later time. Once they make those requests to the agency.
That makes more sense.
That's what I'm saying, you could keep, you could keep what you have done and say, you, you know, we adopted these, but. The agency, why don't you go back and look at these specific things and see and make a recommendation about, um, going forward?
Thank you for sharing that, but, all right, cause my understanding was last week, if we didn't adopt what the standard was for dealdren. It would still be in limbo and it opened up for E P A to come in and set that standard, so we need to set that. Whether or not other agencies have to apply, not only direct that, but because G W A have that information. It kind of put them first in line. So if, if there's something, a process in between on a working level that needs to be done to address that. I would think the agency would be amenable to consider that. That seems to be the biggest concern to G W A.
I think it goes with the first one, uh, one, one, we're gonna have to start after the training. One qualification and if you've already done the rolling capital, so typically you can tell us we have to start tomorrow.
But, but it, but it sounds like we probably need to have some additional conversations. Not, you.
And I think that can be done outside of a wholesale replication of the free. Uh, adoption and, uh, and then if you happen to be unsatisfied with that. You could also make a request for us to change those regulations, which is something that we could put out for public note. Did I capture that correctly?
Basically. I'm gonna try and make a motion.
But can I, 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 I think what we're all interested in is like the implementation date, right? It's kind of like, we want it to be relatively sooner than later and took Guangyin Day like almost a year to get to this point, right? So that's why I'm bringing it up, like, if we rescinded our vote last and we got all the things hashed out, we didn't have to do a whole forty five day public period. The toxic colors reviews it and then it basically gets implemented quicker than one year if you do a successful process. That's pretty much the case throughout that study.
Okay, so what I'm saying, I like her, uh, path forward is that this stays. And I'm glad the needle is weird, okay? I've never seen that on a board, I'm just gonna lay that out there. So, that this stays in place, that we then as a board direct the. That this stays in place, that we then, as a board, direct the um. Agency to have further discussions with uh G P A on many of these issues that were discussed today. And. Sorry, I'm G W A, uh G, G P A and G W A, uh to discuss these issues that were brought forth today. So that they can come back with uh maybe some amendments and and then we can um, we can vote on the amendment. So this stands, we can amend it. And that some of those, uh one of those can be the implementation date, right? So we have the implementation date, what are we using for the testing point? There's a difference of opinion over here, um and I don't know if we need to panic the whole island if the water's next. To me, that makes sense, but I'm not an expert, so I'd like to kind of make a motion now, it's shorter. Yes.
I commend you for the organ on this stuff. And then I commend the other water providers for not doing what you're doing. Um, I hope in the future you don't keep stuff from us because this, this might happen again.
Too much work to afford this lack of stuff.
Right, I mean, okay, and then on that, there's, I don't think there's anything wrong with being first. And I think that's where we are, we're an island, we can't afford. To do what Missouri can do or something like that, right? Um, so we really need to be proactive in in this stuff. And I I think that was what we were thinking last time and why we voted, uh we wanted to get something done instead of doing nothing, right? And then, and then because I understand that thi- this is being treated differently than past contaminants. But, I mean, I mean, maybe those past contaminants. Way. Uh, for this regulation, for uh, right? So that's, you know, but I can't do anything, we can't do anything about that past stuff right now. Um, and um I think what uh Steve was saying, um, we can't um, you know, go to the other providers and. Mandate they do something, we do something.
Well, because it's not a, I mean, it's not a regulated system.
But I, I mean, I I think research is saying is that it's in the pipeline, it's. It's gonna happen, it's just not.
But I think.
Saying, or uh uh um, good, 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 cause I'm always saying that it's in our, our responsibility to protect the public. By protecting the environment, and I think that's, that, that's what we need to be doing, we can.
My question is, since we voted for it, like, either up or down was the choice, it, and I guess it isn't that accurate, like, uh. G P A implemented immediately?
Yeah, that's one question of two.
What hap- what happened now?
One to both.
Because this is already like a yes vote, or it was a yes vote, so. Does that mean we have to implement it right away?
So I think, uh, so my question is based on the comment in G W A saying, you know, the most um due regs, right, you're given two years for implementation. So I like what, if if we're going to look at the start of the implementing, I I wanna ask the board, where do you wanna implement? I mean, do you wanna take G W A's recommendation, you know, or comment about two years from now?
You already, the board already voted to to a- adopt it. I I think, um, if I can make the recommendation would just be that, that the, that the the agency. Continuing to discuss and maybe that they will be able to come to an understanding about how this implementation. Would look, because I'm just wondering, like, looking, looking at this, you know, so for example, like, they're they're saying, well, we should be. Everybody should be starting the same, we should be monitoring for the fourth quarter before it starts, and then they're saying, you. You know, and why are you looking at at the the um sampling from the wells when that's not an accurate? Um, that that's not accurate, where it's not even, that's not even in this this action of it, so it's the entry point. Um, so maybe in further discussion, it's possible they might get to the same thing where they say, you know what? We don't need an immediate um notification, we, we, you know, for for the. So voluntary data, I'm just, I I'm I'm just saying it's, you you know, so there there might be, or they might look at it and go, no, no, we need to notify people, like.